I can't.
You're a mean mother.
We said.
Wait, let me see that.
You're so simple.
Yeah.
It's a little bit.
It's a.
Tell Chris for I knew.
I'll do it.
Why you say?
Thank you.
I think you're.
I'll get what looks like.
Wish.
We'd like to know.
Why?
This was. You know, I keep my.
Um, I. Same. You turn for that.
Right now.
I got you all. Yeah, I have a little. I have to take. Here, my.
That was.
You killed my.
So. Yes. That's. And if you want to be a two. That's. Very well, can be. The. Hospital. Eventually. The prison. And. You want to. The. It's. First.
Go there for you. How are you?
Just how are you?
Good job.
It's. Supposedly. Looks familiar. Now, we're in. You probably know the. Time to sit sharing. If you're not dialing. I'm like, that's crazy. And look at the reality of this. It's gonna work. I'm saying. Shut up. The guns down. Because I thought. Bring them. It's likely. That would help.
Yeah. I saw.
It was quite.
I'm like.
I'm. Nobody's there. Yeah. But. Every time. Well, I.
I thought that was cute.
You were good.
It's good in the.
I just started. So. Again. Six. But. And then if I can.
You're staying on that.
Next one. Prohibition. Turn on this. Oh, thanks, Larry. Is. Yes. We should.
Solid City. What commissioners are. This week called. This moment. Christian Bonnet, he will lead us an invocation.
Dear only Father. Lord, I want to thank you. Thank you for the many blessings you bestowed on each and every one of us. Thank you, dear Lord, for waking us up this morning and starting this on our way to reasonable portion of our life, health, and strength.
Yes.
Father, I ask you to be with us. As we listen. And hear what is being said to us. Lord, help us to make decisions that are going to be pleasing and right in thy sight. And for the town of Silver City. For these and other blessings I ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. And if you had to honest. In the life of ladies. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the government over which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible and with liberty and justice for all. He will lead us in our mission statement.
Uh, town's receiving mission statement. To advance a framework for success through public governance. Dynamic partnerships when they may.
Mission around in absence of Mayor Protim family, will you read us, lead us in our business state?
Silver City is a safe, prosperous, and vibrant community. University, innovation, and education drive success. In a globally competitive society.
Thank you both. Thank you all on any adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, Mayor. We have one adjustment. And that is going to be in your packet. Work is section four point two, schedule C. On page two of twenty-one. And you have the amended. Corrected. We changed town to Wolf Speed Town to Innovative Construction Group.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve. We have no.
That's it.
It's been proven probably second on the thing to let it be known by sign of. All opposed have the same right. Motion carried.
Move that we approve the agenda.
Sir. It's my move about a second that the agenda be approved. With the necessary amendments, all in favor by sign of.
Ah, yes.
All opposed have the same right, hearing none. The agenda is approved. Moving right along, we have a presentation. Uh.
None of the. Development inside that.
I am. Time to. It's.
I'm watching. The jurors. Take some.
So that's why National Public Works Week proclamation, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would you want to consider? Uh, that's, that's pretty much the presentation. It's something to share from, to me, from a, one of our engineering firm, said this is something that's coming up and. I wanted to sit. Well, I didn't consider that from, from the mayor's consideration.
Comments, questions? And attorney, does that require, uh, anything but a consent?
I would say you probably want to take a motion.
Okay. That's the question.
I move that we accept the, uh, proclamation, National Public Works Week proclamation, um, May nineteenth through twenty-fifth. Twenty-fourth.
Second, please, let it be known by sign of. All opposed have the same right. Hearing none, motion carried. I'll be carrying. As everyone signed up.
No one signed up for either public hearing.
Okay.
Four point one. Annexing, uh, the issue for the campsite.
So. This kind of ties along with. The Innovative Construction Group. So this is. In order for us to move forward with the incentive agreement. Um. The land has to be incorporated into the city limits by annexation. So these, this is already part of the campsite, but these particular parcels have not been annexed yet. So at the last meeting, you, you all gave the clerk permission to start moving ahead with her findings. And so my findings were favorable for the, um, annexation. And you can see the tax revenue gain. Um, is three thousand eight hundred twelve dollars and forty-six cents for the current land value. That is raw land, no improvements. So that will increase as, um. You know, things are being built. So we have a fire tax revenue loss of eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents with a total revenue gain of two thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. And so the service impacts, the fire department will have no additional impacts because they're already in our central fire district. Parks and Rec, planning, uh, Parks and Rec, there will be no additional burden. Planning Department, code enforcement, of towns code ordinances, public nuisances, abandoned nuisance, junk motor vehicles, and abandoned structures. They're already in our ETJ right now. Um, so with them being in our city limits, then again, and Jack can kind of. Help explain that a little more. We'll have more, you know. Can send code violations and so forth and so on. Um, police department, this annexation will increase routine patrol, crime prevention, prevention, and calls for services, which will require additional staffing, training, and equipment, including vehicles. Um, public works, this one, I'll add any additional burden to the public works department. The public utilities. Um, Chris, what did we? Can you help me out on the public utilities? For the project ice? I mean, the, um, this new work.
Four thousand.
Four thousand.
So four thousand gallons there, and that's already been allocated. So, um. After the board, if they determine the findings of sufficiency. Then you may, may elect to schedule a public hearing on June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four to receive public comment. Or the Board of Commissioners may also take no action on this petition. Staff is recommending the annexation of these properties. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners would approve the resolution setting the public hearing date. You have any questions?
Any questions coming from the board about this particular, uh, item?
Excuse me, just out of curiosity, what causes the fire tax? Revenue loss.
Josh, can you explain?
Uh, if you live in city limits, you don't get fire tax, but people right outside city limits, they're frequently in the fire tax.
So they will, when we annex them, they'll become in the city limits, so we lose that house.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, will we receive tax dollars from the products that they manufacture there, John?
Uh, manuf-.
That they sell.
Uh.
As part of the sales tax that's loaded or?
No, it's, uh, like, say they make widgets and they sell the widgets all to somewhere in Pennsylvania.
Right.
That's what we get. That's us.
That we bought in Silver City to get these.
Yeah, we have to be bought in Chatham County for to become Silver City, South.
That's right. Thank you for that.
Any other questions or concerns?
You want a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution. Setting a public hearing date. On, what's the date? June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Seven.
It's been proven second that we, uh, approve the resolution and set the hearing date, all in favor, let it be known by sign of. All opposed have any sign right? Hearing none, the motion has carried. Moving on. Four point two. Economic incentive agreement. Innovative Construction Group.
I will say.
Oh, yeah.
Well, sir, state your name and your residence, please, sir.
Uh. Michael Smith. My office is in Pittsburgh.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, missionaries. Um, we have a. Quick presentation to give on Innovative Construction Group. Um. Very excited about this project. Um. And. This, this company is based in Jacksonville, Florida. Um, and they also look in two other, uh, major metro areas. So it was exciting for us to win this project versus a, a site in Arizona and a site in Texas. Um, it was, it was competitive. Um, as, as most projects are, one of the things about, about this project is since they're a national firm, they had lots of choices. And so we're certainly grateful that this is the location they've chosen. Next. Um, it's a hundred and fifty-seven new full-time jobs. And, um, in terms of their annual payroll, it's a little over eight million dollars. And the total investment is just under forty million. And that's for their new, new facility that they will be building on this site that we just discussed. Um, it'll be a hundred and fifty thousand square foot facility. And it will be, uh, kind of northeast of where the camps or where the, uh, Wolf Speed facility is that, that all of you know where. Um, we wanted to show you this because. It's, it, we have a very large and beautiful county. And just in case you don't know where the campsite is, we, we popped a, a nice, uh, arrow on there to show it's right there, uh. Uh, just west, uh, of our downtown and, and right on the, uh, Randolph County line. So that's where the campsite is, where this is going, uh, very close to the Wolf Speed facility. Next. And this is more specific. Uh, in terms of exactly where that is, so you can see, uh, Wolf Speed is on four hundred and fifty acres. And, you know, when you ride on sixty-four, you can see that project ice, you won't be able to see that from sixty-four because it's a little bit further north. Uh, but you can see one of the exciting things about this project, it continues the momentum that we have, uh, here in the Silver City area. Uh, and the biggest, certainly one of the biggest numbers that jumps off of that page is one thousand three hundred fifty acres that are still available, uh, for future development and future business investment. Um, this will bring a lot of benefits, uh, here in Silver City. Uh, in terms of job creation, uh, increasing the tax base, um, and certainly economic, uh, diversification and stimulus. And I think certainly with the, with the opportunities to, to build, uh, new houses here, um, this is a, a perfect company, a perfect fit, and, and a great time to have it here. Um, they're going to have, uh, um, employed, uh, local, uh, folks here and make investments. And, and certainly, uh, will be working very closely with Central Carolina Community College for training these new employees. Next. Um, and, you know, we, we have incentives to make our, our locations competitive.
Yes.
Um, you know, the other locations had incentives as well. Um, and this, uh, North Carolina General Statute one fifty-seven dash seven point one, um, is, is that specific statute that we use. Um, it, it was a competitive project. Um, and we were grateful that, that you all are considering these incentives. Uh, the business incentive grant that we're asking you, uh, to look at is eighty percent of these new, uh, taxes granted back to them over a five-year period. Um, and I think one of the important things about this is the company has to come here, they have to hire these folks, they have to make this investment, they pay their taxes, and then we grant part of these taxes back to them over this five-year period. Um, we've got a lot of key partners. Um, every single project we have requires an entire room full of people, uh, to make it happen. Uh, some of the partners are, are listed on here, including the Department of Commerce in Raleigh, uh, the Economic Development Partnership in Raleigh, uh, certainly the General Assembly, um, Chatham County, uh, you all, this board, Duke Energy, and North Carolina Department of Transportation, um, our development partners, Sammott. Um, Norfolk Southern Railroad was very helpful. Um, and as a matter of fact, Norfolk Southern has a, it's a prime rail site, so again, that helps us in marketing the rest of that site. Uh, also the North Carolina Railroad Company, and certainly the landowners. Um, I, I think we, um, uh, Tim Morris and D H Griffin have done a great job of holding on this property for moments like this. I think that's very important. So, uh, with that, I would ask for your support, uh, uh, of this, of, of the Silver City Grant Program, uh, to support Project Ice. And what, what questions can I answer, Mr. Mayor?
All right, boy, it is now time to, if you have any questions for Mr. Smith, I will start off with the fact. That, uh, we were in that area today for the six eighty-five, uh, unveiling, uh, the sign for that corridor. It was exciting. This area is growing at. A rapid speed. I mean, it's almost lightning fast how much is going on. As Mrs. Smith mentioned, that is, is right there, they're going to need a railroad spur, which is also going to attract some other businesses. Uh. So whatever questions or concerns that you may have, uh, I ask that you voice, uh, ask him at this time.
This, uh, proposal is just for Project Ice, correct?
Yes.
Not for other, other, other projects that are already there or maybe coming, it's just for Project.
Just for the specific project. And I'm glad you asked that because. We've been talking about this project, we, we first learned about this, it was literally twenty-three months. And those projects don't last that long, so, uh, yes, it's just, just for this one project.
Thank you.
Do you guys know what they do? And respond, do you know what they, what this company does?
So it makes housing, uh.
Yeah. Basically, there's a law, well, uh, electric, the plumbing. You build it, you take it to a site, you snap it together to another piece. And it's almost like putting a puzzle together, some puzzle house, for lack of a better term, I don't know what the real term is. And so that is, uh. Something that would also maybe be beneficial as we look down the road at affordable housing. Right here in our backyard.
This is primarily for manufactured housing?
Yes.
Okay. Do, do you guys make like? Trusses and things like that for regular homes, or is it just specifically manufactured homes?
I think both. Yeah, great, because again, because of their connection, Pulte, and Pulte has a variety of, of different housing that they build.
Nice.
And commercial buildings. Also, I found out today that they also manufacture commercial buildings, so.
Just still trusses too. Very cool.
Anyone else? Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
You can open the public hearing, and then you can have discussion. Now that his presentation's over, now you can open the public hearing and then close it.
Okay.
We've done it both ways before, after and before the presentation, but you're fine.
Okay, can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Sure. Second.
They moved it probably second that we open up the public hearing, all in favor, let it be known by sign of. All opposed have the same right, hearing none. That the public hearing is now open, but no one signed for the public hearing.
So now you can turn around and close.
Don't we close the hearing? I said.
It moved it probably second, and then. We close the public hearing. All in favor, let it be known by sign of. All opposed have the same right. Hearing none, the public hearing is officially closed, and now. Uh. We need a motion to move forward.
Let me just make one, I just want to make one comment about the property taxes. Um, would it be, this would be good for the board and for the town if we push forward that the taxes are paid upfront and we refund the money at the end of the year? And the town is allowed to put it in a municipal bond, so we can basically earn interest off of the free loan that we're giving, and then we could refund it at the end of the year. Does anybody have any comments about that?
What free loan are you speaking of?
So like for the year twenty twenty-seven to nineteen, um, nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-two. We're giving them, like, credit on their property taxes, what if we're allowed to hold on to some of that money for the year and then earn interest on, like, a municipal bond?
We never received that money.
No, we, uh.
I'm just saying.
We. Chatham County collects, Chatham County remits it to us, and, uh, the previous two that we had, they both have their own set date of when they need to be paid by, and in, during that time period, we do put it into N C C M T.
I don't agree with you. Do you earn interest on that?
Yeah, we do.
Oh, right.
And we're getting about five point two percent.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So well, the next. So this would also go on June seventeenth, that public hearing, is that correct?
Okay, what, um, what'll happen tonight is that you can approve. The, um, incentive policy. And, um, it becomes null and void in the event that the property does not annex into the campsite. So it'll be depending on the June seventeenth hearing. So they have to become annexed in order for this agreement to be valid, but there is a paragraph, um, in the agreement, Mike, what do you remember which paragraph?
Well, yes, I think. Let's see.
So that, basically, the way to stay on is, uh, if they do not get annexed, this agreement is null and void.
Right.
Okay.
So we need a motion.
Yes.
I move that we. We just had a public hearing, correct?
Right, so now you can.
I move that we approve the incentive agreement between the towns. And Innovative Construction Group.
Yes. It's been moved probably second that we approve the economic, uh, development agreement with Innovative. Construction Group, all in favor, let it be known by sign of. All opposed have the same rights, hearing none, motion as. Thank you, sir. All right, all business. Pleasant discussion, and we are not. Uh, this was a pretty here today, basically, if you had any questions or concerns prior to Thursday, we did not intend to. Spend a lot of time with this, but if there's something that caught your attention that you wanted cleared up prior to Thursday, this was pretty much the time to do that.
Well, I would look, look.
Is it five thirty, Thursday?
Excuse me.
Five thirty.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Hearing none, gonna move. No, it is. We're all in here, they have six point one pool operation hours. Um. Tyler.
He's not here.
He's, uh, he's in a class today, and he was hoping he would make it like in the moment, so he might be a few minutes later, I ain't have a text from him either, so. Um, I think he probably can handle. Any questions possible, we can talk about it.
Okay.
Uh, it's in your packet, I think, uh, can we maybe lay down a revised? They had twenty twenty-three there, I think, and it's now got twenty twenty-four. And so, uh, they got broken into, what, thirty-four categories here? Um. You got school day operations, I guess that's when school's still in between May twenty-seventh and June eleventh. Monday through Friday that weekend, it'd be closed, but it'd be open on the weekends, twelve to six. And then, uh, that other school day operation period after, um. Rock for Labor Day. Close during the school days and up on the weekends. And then from June twelfth to August twenty-fifth, twelve to six. Monday through Sunday.
Okay.
And then we're, uh, the hours operations will still be available also during the holidays. That would be Memorial Day, Juneteenth, July fourth, and Labor Day. Is that pretty much it, what we understand?
Yeah, and he also provided on page sixteen, three twenty-one in your packet. The program and daily operation schedule. To let you know kind of what's going on, swimming lessons or any type of difference. Things that are going on.
What? Before we go.
Um, in the packet, you'll notice that he had twenty-three.
Hmm.
Season. And so I fixed it, and it's, and the separate handout is twenty-four. It's actually for the twenty-four season. So we caught the error before it was noticed, so we didn't have to admit.
It's in the downloadable. It's correct.
Yes.
So in the packet, that's a good point, schedule D, uh, eight, starting at seventeen, eighteen, and twenty-one. You've got to break down a little better, you can see what activities are happening each day. Yeah. Um. Boys and girls clubs, swimming lessons, public swim, full times.
So you need a motion to approve the full operating day?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion. For all streaming out.
Sure. It's been moved, that's second that the operating hours of our municipal move be approved, let it be known all by sign of. Uh, all opposed have the same right, hearing none, motion carried. Thank you, sir. Manager's report.
I really quick, Mayor, just a few highlights from, uh. Uh, since our last meeting, me and the mayor and the chief of police, we attended the future I six eighty-five. Simon Valley, the day out on four twenty-one, it was right there at the intersection, I guess, near Julian Airport Road. Uh, pretty impressive, we actually went by and, uh, did a loop around the cul-de-sac at Toyota, so that was impressive. Um. Something to think about, me and Commissioner Austin's been working on, uh, this property on fifteenth street. Must have been a couple of years ago, we put up a legal dumping, a no dumping sign, no littering sign, and we're still getting dumped in there. And, uh, the, the, the legal dumping officer from the county stopped by and gave us some input, he found, he's found something, so I think he's going to try to pursue, uh, who, who did the legal dumping, but. Think our sign might need to be a little bit larger. It's, it's pretty small, but the no dumping is really, really, really small, so that might be something we want to, uh, invest in, just FYI there. Uh, and then meetings, county budget, public hearings tomorrow evening to, uh, six o'clock here in the courtroom. Uh, our workshop is Thursday at, uh, five thirty here. Memorial Day holiday is Monday, so we closed. May twenty-seventh, and our next town war meeting would be June third. Uh, so Monday, it'll be our first meeting of the month, so. And we may have another special meeting in between, but. That's my report, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Uh, uh, town attorney, may we, you, sir?
Uh, don't have anything. Other than, I think, discussion later.
Okay, uh.
I do have one thing. I want to let everyone know that we're moving right along with these, uh, memorial service for Mr. Larry Chee. Um, the plaque has been ordered, um, the granite is there, he, it's already there, so, um, we're going to meet all the deadlines for that. Miss, um, Norma Boone and myself, uh, designed the invitations today, and she helped me. Um, I know that's special to her heart, and I actually, I actually text her and said, please help me. So she was really sweet, and so those were ordered today, we're going to do eighty, um, invitations, and we're going to give those to each of you, or I'm going to ask, um. There's special people that y'all would like to invite besides the family to attend this, and we're also going to run an ad in the newspaper. And now we want to make it a pretty special, special event for everyone. So we're looking forward to it. As that. June twenty-second.
June twenty-second.
Okay.
And what time, we said ten thirty?
Ten thirty A M, so we'll do, I'm thinking brunch and order, orders, um, style food. And, um, and I want to have special seating for the family.
Yeah.
And for all of y'all.
Spread the water, guys. Spread.
Six twenty-seven, nineteen thirty.
Six twenty-two.
Six twenty-two.
But I'll send reminders.
All right, thank you.
Ma'am?
Ten thirty.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, do we work on the old girl?
The what? Old girl. Oh, there, yes, yeah, we're not, okay. Yeah, I just got a report from. Watson Rent today, and they're moving Wolf Speed ahead with a lot of stuff, and that happens to be one of them. So look forward to seeing. So look forward to seeing something different in our parts. Uh, and surrounding area, there is some governance comments. Um, let me, let me do this because. I'm getting calls and one of the things that we have said. It was a board is transparency. But also. We have legal counsel. That directs us uh in that area, especially when it's concerning personnel. So I'm just going to make a brief introduction uh and leave it at that. Let me tell your friends so that they can slow down. Jack Meadows is our interim town manager, Ms. Kimberly Pinter is our assistant town manager. And uh, that's pretty much all we can give you. Uh, we love to be able to divulge everything. But there's an attorney sitting right over there, never attended law school. And he tells us what we can and cannot do and most and matters concerning personnel. The caveat is, these guys have done a phenomenal job. And I want them to know it and I want you to know it. They worked late hours, they have not let up since they have been put uh in these positions. And I think we owe them a round of applause, I do know they have my deepest appreciation. We are catching up, we are. Silling up, we are finishing up a lot of things. And these guys are working together. And I just want you guys to know how much appreciate what you're doing. You stepped up to the plate when you need, when we needed you. And you're doing a better job and I, this more than ask for better, just take. There's no way, because and we didn't know where we were gonna get here, but once we got here. We figured out how to continue and move forward. Uh, Mr. McKay there with D R Horton, we call all the partners. I don't know that that was a problem, we could not divulge the problem. And so now publicly, I'm letting you know who's what, doing what. And whom to contact in the case of a need. So with that being said, I I wanna thank you guys for coming out, I'm all. If the board has anything else to put out here. Yes, sir.
Mister uh Mister Mayor, Jack, I uh I spoke to you last week about the the water allocation issue that we have in the town. Um, the problem is we have very limited amount of water that can be reallocated. I finally got explicit statement from this lady Vanessa from D E Q stating that. All accounts cannot be restored. It's finally, there's finally just black and white, it's very clear, before it was very ambiguous and. I didn't know for sure, so I wanted to make, I wanted to make absolutely sure that was the case, cause it was very arbitrary, what was decided. So what I think we could do and we should entertain it, talk to our constituents, see how our constituents have been affected by this. Is incorporate a lottery system that would allow the remaining twelve hundred gallons to be divvied out. With a basically a equal opportunity where you get your name drawn out of a hat, twelve hundred gallons per day is not gonna go very far. But at least show our constituents or trying to use something with what we have. And we can also clear the air that no accounts can be turned back on or deactivated. This is something that needs clarity for realtors who sell properties, cause there's a lot of. Speculation or customers are like, I don't know if I can turn it back on. And we also need an explicit statement from public utilities, if they deactivate now. Will they be able to reactivate in the future, because the moratorium won't end, even with the mergers, how I understand it, is that correct? Cause the S O C doesn't end downstream, like you're looking at early twenty twenty seven, late twenty twenty six. So we need an explicit statement from public utilities stating whether we need clarity for our realtors. And with the conversation really for you guys, that we need to discuss this with our constituents, do we think this is the best approach? Do do we wanna hoard a resource that's scarce and there's obviously market demand for. Try to help out maybe five or six individuals. Um, the estimation will be very easy, the administrative burden will be minimal. D E Q provides exactly how many gallons uh to estimate based on type of structure. Commercial versus residential, how many bedrooms, residential is easy, it's seventy five gallons of bedrooms. I think it can be done, uh, I think we can send out a letter to all inactive accounts, so we know that everybody's voices have been heard and. Maybe we give it a month. Let them call back in, uh let them email, call, get their name so that we can draw it and we can approach it in another month. Not necessarily trying to make a motion, but I'd like you guys to discuss with your constituents, if you think there's a better idea. I'd like to hear it and I'd also like to hear what your constituents may have to say too.
That's all. Alright, thank you.
Any comments?
No. Yes. D E Q is a branch put together by the non-countile legislative body. They regulate what a municipality can and cannot do. I read the email, you read the email, they said no. That's what they think.
But there's twelve hundred gallons that are remaining.
Twelve million, if they said no, that's the end of the conversation.
It's actually not.
Because what happens is, what D E Q didn't tell you. We got one time to mess up. And they shut this whole water system down.
So what happens to the remaining twelve hundred? So we just use a resource that people want, we don't, we're not able to divvy it up?
What did she tell you? I read, she told you no?
Said no accounts can be turned on.
That's right, that's what she.
But I also included the remaining twelve hundred.
No, it did not, it just said don't turn any accounts on.
Didn't say anything about that, that was never explicitly.
Interpretation, that's my interpretation and I'm trying to look out for the entire town.
It's a meager amount of water, there's not gonna be an infraction of any kind.
How do you know that?
Cause twelve hundred gallons is a drop in the bucket when we look at infiltration after we get rain.
When we get here at at Commissioner's house, how do we deal with this one?
Pollutants in the water, cause because the town's plant is enough at treating the way that they wanna treat it, it's inadequate.
And it's. Maybe, I'm not gonna say it's an app and you don't know that either.
He doesn't have the technology to.
There was contamination released into our water streams.
Because the town's plant.
I'm not buying that and that's not what happened and I know better. That is not what happened.
I disagree.
Well, you have that right, but. The point is. You don't know, and I don't know the repercussions. When a governing body tells you no and you decide, I don't want the danger.
So where are the twelve hundred gallons gonna go, are we gonna sit on them till the end of the moratorium? So we're gonna have people who have nothing that they can use, not even a little drop in the bucket.
Let's, let's put it this way. If you decided. That D E Q has no right, none. Wouldn't tell us to do as far as water and wastewater. Let's use that premise. Is that good?
It's illegal.
Okay, how is that illegal?
Well, it's not technically a law, it's regulation, so I guess you could argue that it's not illegal, you'd be violating a regulation. But that's, I don't wanna get into some, it's not an actual law.
That is, the whole point is. Where Curtis, well, Commissioner Brown worked and retired. If that was the case, we wouldn't need wastewater treatment plant at all, you just do what you wanna do. But D E Q has explained to us what we should not and cannot do. So why are we continuing to go down this road?
I don't understand how certain things are allowed to happen with with businesses coming, like Jersey Mike's, again, explain to me, how are they able? To have their water turned on, was that an existing tap, can you re, can you enlighten me again, Chris?
They were in the planning stage when all that.
Explain it, what does that mean?
They were, they were in the, they had already turned in all the paperwork in the planet, so they, they bet.
The water account was on the active.
Yes. But it was already planned.
It's already planned. So are people not planning when they renovate their house or reactivate their account? That was just a water, that was just a residential water account that's just sitting there.
When you choose to deactivate an account, that's your choice.
But was that explicitly stated by public utilities that it couldn't be turned back on, yes, sir? Did the state back you up on it? Was it explicitly told to the customer, could they turn it back on? Nobody's thinking that hard, I can't turn my water back, I mean, that's just not a rational train of thought. People don't, people aren't thinking that way, I'm just, I, nobody would think, hey, I turned this up, we'll be able to turn it back on, I'm trying to develop a system, guys, to use what little we have. If we wanna sit on it because we're petrified that we're gonna get fined by D E Q, that's fine, but this twelve hundred gallons would would be. A penny on that flow station at the wastewater treatment plant, they would not know.
Right, would you be willing to pay the pound out of your pocket?
Depends on how much it is.
Probably a couple of million, you got, you ready to pay it? You don't know what any of your size number.
Ten million?
No, anyway, proceeding forward. Um, anyone else?
That's a question.
Yes.
Uh, U N C School of Government and in C League of municipalities, if we want to, of course, it's true, either of those. Um, the, is this an off? Do we need to have this conversation outside of a board meeting, or can you just enlighten me on what the process is for us to? Is that something we go through the town to where we?
I actually spoke with John about it and what did we allocate?
Uh, we sent in five hundred dollar per commissioner, I think.
Yeah, and so a lot of.
And historically, that's not used, but he sent in.
So.
That's not unique to Southern City, that's.
I would use mine.
And um, and there's different, um, when you get, do you have a U N C School of Government logins yet?
Thanks, I emailed you about that over the weekend, I tried to log in to one of.
I thought it was the league, yes, and Curtis is, Curtis finally done, it's the, it's quite the process. So anyhow, so the league is different than the U N C School of Government, you can take certain classes through the league and then you can take some through the School of Government. They're both very, you know, very good, um, and I can help you get a login. Or any about any of you that wants a U N C School of Government login, we can do that for you. But there is five hundred dollars each allocated to each of you for continuing education.
Alright.
One more question.
Yes.
Now, to be critical, I'm just curious. Um, I read the email that went out earlier about the notice, forty eight hours, is is. Or is that, is that strategic or is there a reason why we wait until forty eight hours or? Cause this has been talked about before amongst passports, right?
Yes.
Is that a decision that the board has made just to, or is that yours?
No, it's not mine, um, but it's the statute, so what happened with the prior board, um, and we had talked about it with you all. Is we were getting the agenda packets out on a Wednesday, but then you still have two business days left in the week. And a lot, and what all we've got going on right now in the town and business and. Um, different stuff we have to do on the agenda, if we get these out to you on a Wednesday, then you're gonna have a lot of stuff in front of you on Monday night. And so I did, um, back in November, when I was at clerks training in Dover. Um, several of us clerks kind of were speaking about um how they did packets. And pretty much everybody said, um, some, most, it was all Friday. Um, there was none earlier than a Friday, they were all Friday, somewhere lunch, somewhere about three P M, somewhere about P M, but it was all Fridays, we're pretty much.
Okay.
But and and again, um, that is totally up to y'all, it's your agenda, it's your package. Um, we just don't wanna get into um where we have so many things. Sitting in front of y'all on a Monday night, having to amend the agenda every single time, because if you, the, my prior, my members from the um. My prior board, you will remember you had stacks every night, every Monday night, so, um. I don't like delivering packets Friday night, it's really, really late. So we're hoping again with the new agenda software that we hope that y'all approve. In this upcoming budget, that will help the directors um get the information to the clerk a lot quicker. And kind of help streamline the process.
How, 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 how long do you wait? Is there a cutoff time for accepting information for the agenda?
It's going back to a cutoff, but some things we don't have a choice. Um, um, the certain things we have to get them to y'all as quickly as possible. And we would like to get a point for yes.
I like to be able to. When it pops up online, I download it and write on it.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I'll be in the new agenda software, it'll be amazing.
Mayor, I got just a quick one.
What's that?
Uh, Engel Street, is that, is that being gone sent out, so then another street's gonna be closed?
Still trying to get some easements up on the top corner.
Okay, will you give plenty of notice?
Yes.
Will anybody not be able to pull out of their driveway right there at Raleigh and Engel?
We're trying to work it where everybody will be able to get out.
Okay.
Those will be the only, that's the tough ones, it's right there to you.
Right.
And one good note I forgot, uh, we swore in a new detective. Today, thank the chief, I don't know her names. Ah, there you are.
Like Cindy Clark, Clark, she swore in today, she's promoted from officer to detective.
Yeah, so the department is moving right along and I did meet her and uh so. That's a positive note. Anyone else?
Jack, when public works in the the road repaving, do, we do contract that work, right, we don't actually pay, we don't resurface streets ourselves, dude.
I think that's correct, yeah, I have a contractor, John or Christie, I don't know about the. On a ma, on a major scale, we would contract it out.
Okay, I, I visited Gail's property several weeks ago, I was at that community meeting. And um, I brought this up before, the roads are getting paved really high and the road runoff bypasses people's existing culverts. And it floods people's yards, so if we do an area where we do a lot of resurfacing again. I think we should strongly consider getting the road re-leveled and crowned as well properly. Uh, or even incorporation of curbs, that would be very expensive, but we may wanna consider. An infrastructure change, um, is at least get the road at the right height, cause when the road is higher than someone's yard, the culverts are completely uh bypassed. And her yard, your brother's yard, totally floods. It's cause that water comes flying down your street, and we talked about this, that could be improved though, if the roads are brought to the right height. So we wanna, I don't know, next time we get roads repaid, can we try to get an estimate, what that might cost? Cause it is, it's a tremendous amount of work.
Is there a street assessment report that was being worked on?
Yes, it is, and I don't know where it is, uh, what stage it is, but we did tell us, we worked on that. That work was being done, we need to try to dig that up and find out what it is. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll check on that.
Okay, thank you.
It's also happening too, the road quality is poor, at the edges, it's crumbling, cause there's no, there's no structural foundation, they're just, they're just skin coating it. So like um, in my neighborhood, they just repaved six months ago on Dolphin and edges of the roads are already crumbling down in the uh the ditches. That could be corrected with implementation of um a curb possibly. But as well as getting that road flatter, it's gonna flush with the ground, not hanging off, cause that's what's making it flush. Can maybe get a better product, I just don't know how much it would cost and it'd be interesting to know what they would charge.
Well, only that, that uh study, when it gets back here, once we find it, it may be finished, I I I don't know, but I do know it was implemented. And I did ask about it a couple of months ago, the cost of the roads.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Check on that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, again, I thank you guys for coming out and uh bidding this board meeting, I hope you'll, we will see you tomorrow night. Where the company will be here to discuss how they're gonna spend our money. And I hope the Applehead's gonna spend it on us. And so again, on tomorrow at six o'clock and then Thursday at five thirty. You'll get to talk about how we spend the money that we have right here in Southern City on the citizens and listen to what's going on. Yeah.
Y'all going in? Then quarters with the Motel Island generally statute one forty three dash three eighteen eleven A five. I'll make the motion, we go into closed session.
Second, it's been moved probably second that we enter into closed section, I ought to be known by sign of. It's been moved, probably second to that, we enter into closed section, I already been known by sign by. All right, we have the same idea.